Good evening. Welcome to the November 19, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I'm going to take this time to remind everybody, if you haven't already done so, please take your cell phones, put them on mute, or turn them off if you would. And please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on application requesting a rezoning or conditional use permit will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, December 15, 2014 County Council meeting. The Commission's vote on the Platts is final unless a variance is requested or that the Platte is denied. I see we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just a roadmap for the evening. I will read each application into the record. We will then ask staff for their analysis and/or recommendations. The applicant then, if they're in the room and wishes to do so, may come up and explain the application and answer any questions of the Commission. We will then open it up to the public that anybody in the room that wishes to speak on that particular application may do so. The applicant may then come forward and address any of the issues raised during the public hearing. We will then bring it back before the Commission where we will discuss it openly and then vote on the matter. And like I said, the zoning and conditional use permits go onto the County Council for their recommendation, for their final approval, and the decision on Platts is final unless a variance is requested or it is denied. And just as a note too, the, one of the tabled items from last month's agenda, 24485, the final Platte for the Enon Branch Estates, it was tabled at the meeting last month, and the applicant has requested that remain on the table, so we will not be taking that particular item up this evening. All right. The first application is application 24794, the preliminary Platte for the LMC subdivision. SC Marion Properties LLC and Richmond Industrial LLC, the owner slash developer, and the Premier Civil Engineering is the engineer. The zoning is C2, General Commercial District, and the location, the application is on the northwest corner of Highway N and Dwella Road, located within Council District 2. Steph?
Okay, this is a three lot commercial subdivision. The property is, it's south of the, oh my, I can't remember the name of the subdivision. Anyway, Dove Meadows, thank you. Dove Meadows subdivision in this tract, they were all in the city of Wentzville. The annexation that took, put those properties into Wentzville was found to be illegal, and so the properties kicked back to the county. A couple of things on this property, it was, it was owned commercial with, in the city of Wentzville, and it, and so it was set up for this commercial development to like use the stormwater detention area that's in the Dove Meadows subdivision and things. And that, that's something that staff has been internally discussing with, with our legal department to make sure that, that it's okay for this subdivision to have the stormwater go into that, that stormwater from this subdivision go into that subdivision. And it is, because it was something that was established by Wentzville, and we had, we took what Wentzville did. We had some talk internally that maybe there should be some type of a maintenance agreement for the detention basin in Dove Meadows that this subdivision helps pay for that. We, as staff, aren't really wanting to go to say they have to do that, but, but we recommend that they do because at some point in time, if there's problems with the Dove Meadows detention area, the people in Dove Meadows can probably sue the people of this subdivision. So we think it behooves them to do it, but it, we will, we are not recommending that that be part of the staff recommendation. Another thing that we have been, that we've been working on, and I don't think it shows on the Platte in front of you, the Missouri Department of Transportation has been working with our county transportation department, and they are now requesting a 30-foot right-of-way dedication along the frontage. And with Platts, we, we generally get dedications with Platts, and so we would recommend approval of the subdivision with that condition that they do provide, either right-of-way dedication or a reserve strip along State Highway N. Oh, I'm sorry, we have letters.
Yes.
Out of practice. Letters we received were from St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation District, the city of Wentzville, MoDOT, Public Water District Number Two. We have a variance request letter, and I'm sorry, I forgot to talk about the variance request. They are wanting to have the subdivision have frontage on Highway N rather than an interior street. And with this being a commercial subdivision, we have, we have approved variances like that in the past. Page and Upper Bottom Road, that subdivision, we approved a variance for them to have frontage on the street. And we required them to have a cross-access easement 24 feet wide that's built to a standard, and that's what they will do with this subdivision if you approve that variance. And I'm sorry, and then the final thing we received since the last agenda was the revised preliminary Platte. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, Gary.
I'm just looking here, on C2 Commercial District, permissive uses, what item does this fall under for a subdivision? This is a C2 property, yes?
Yeah, it's on C2, and they're just going to develop it with commercial uses. So the commercial-
It's not going to be a residential-
No, it's not going to be a residential subdivision. It is, anytime that a piece of property is split a third time and the parcels are less than 10 acres in size, they have to Platte it as a subdivision, whether it's a commercial or industrial subdivision or residential subdivision.
Okay, so the three lots would fall under, one of the 405-135, Section B, under one of the permissive uses for future-
Yeah, the, right, those you just have to put on the lots.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Quick question. Does the variance request, does that need to be run back by MoDOT, given the nature of it?
No, MoDOT is, MoDOT is, well, I don't know that we have the full approval from MoDOT, but, but they're only going to have one entrance along Highway N, and it'll be a shared entrance for the commercial properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. All right. Is the applicant in the room?
Yes.
Go ahead and come forward. Can you, can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Steve Marion, 647 Big Bend Drive, Wentzville, Missouri.
Go ahead.
First of all, the variance and the, my property, and I represent Chris Craddock myself, our property are the lots one and two, that's what we're subdividing. You can probably see on your drawing that the original property line is skewed across, between Lot Two and Lot Three. So part of the subdivision Platte was to clean up that property line, just basically squared up with the, the back property line and Highway N. The other part was two separate uses for those two lots, and we went ahead and subdivided that. You can also see, and Jan mentioned it, that the 24-foot of cross-access connects Lot Ones, Lots One, Two, and Three together. We don't really have, we don't really have the opportunity for an internal road on this particular property because of the depth. So that was part of that thinking. We have met with MoDOT, and one of the things I want to address is the 30-foot dedication. We originally met with MoDOT and asked them what their plans were for Highway N and what that 30-foot would be used for. Their answer was that they weren't sure what they would do in the future. My client, we have a, a bit of a problem donating 30 feet of right-of-way for a set of plans that does not exist and no future, no future plan that is known today. So that road may get widened to five lanes, it may stay two lanes, it may move south, it may move north. And the reason I bring this up is, we originally got an email from MoDOT that said that they did not require the 30-foot right-of-way. Then a couple days later, we got an email from MoDOT that said, "We've changed our mind, we've decided we're going to require the 30-foot right-of-way." In conversations with them as late as yesterday, asking the question, "What exactly changed and can we see the plan that you're building in the future?", the answer was that the county and the city of Wentzville had decided in 2001 that that would be 120-foot corridor through Highway N for some future widening that, that nobody really understands right now. So MoDOT said yesterday that they relented to the county and the city of Wentzville based on a plan from 2001, which has no funding, no design, no anything. We have a real problem with deciding to give that 30 feet away as far as giving it away today and not knowing what the future of that road holds. You know, we could dedicate that 30 feet to St. Charles County today, and the road might move 100 feet the other way, or a quarter mile the other way. Then we've got 30 feet that is just in no man's land. We don't know that answer, so I wanted to address that.
Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thanks. And just a reminder, I forgot to mention at the beginning, anybody that does speak, please do fill out one of the speaker cards that we have here at the front, so we have a record of, of your notes. All right, we will now open this up to the, the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this application as well, please feel free to come forward and do so. Seeing none, we will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back before the Commission. Thoughts, suggestions, comments?
I've got a question here, Matt. Legal question. Is this something that they could do an eminent domain on later? If you said, "My 30, I want 30 feet off the front of your property along Highway N", do they have the right to do that?
Well, they would always have the right to, to start condemnation proceedings if they needed right-of-way on it. Generally though, there has to be some type of nexus between the required dedication and, you know, whatever the, the use of the property is going to be. In other words, I can't give you a definitive answer based on, you know, the paucity of facts we have.
But if MoDOT wants it, not asking for a formal legal opinion here, but they would get it, I guess?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if, assuming that generally, how it would work, MoDOT wants to widen the road, they need additional right-of-way in the future, roads generally are a public purpose, they would file a condemnation petition, they would go in, convince the court, "We need to widen the road, these are our plans, this is what we need to take", yeah, they would, they would pretty look at that.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just make a general comment, and I understand Steve's lack of definitive input back from MoDOT, but if you just spin the clock back at what something was 20 years ago and what it is today, everybody here on this Commission, along this Highway N, Dwella Road, is ballooned. It's a high-growth area with homes, residential. If you have driven that, which I've done quite a bit, that's, it's becoming a logjam. There isn't, it's a two-way road, and if somebody stops, I mean, you're going to be backed up for a mile, and it's... So I see, my, the way we've been approving more land in that expansion in that area, for you, for a commercial thing, I think it's going to be a plus for you, because you're going to have more, actually more traffic for whatever future business you might put in there. And I can understand where MoDOT might not have a definitive answer for you, but it's coming. I mean, it's not, it's not going to go back to horses and cattle and sheep. It's a high-growth area, and I think it's on an accelerated basis, just from, if you just go back five years ago from what it was then and what it is now, I, I don't, I wouldn't fight the 30 feet, because I think it's going to benefit you in the long run if they, if they expand that. That's a big corridor coming out into St. Charles County and that Highway N there, so I think it's a good thing. I, I don't look at it as a negative. That's my opinion.
Difference is, yes, but they would buy it from you.
Yeah. If we require it, he's giving it. If we don't require it, then the state has to buy it from him.
Yeah.
Right. That's the bottom line.
Christmas is until next month.
Yeah.
And the state is our taxpayers' money.
All right. Any other discussion?
I have another question for you.
Okay.
Has there been a requirement been made out of any other, I'm just trying to remember now, has there been any other commercial development along this corridor where this requirement's stuck?
What we generally get, or ask for is a reserve strip, so they leave the, the 30, or whatever the right-of-way requirement is, and, and leave it open so that we don't put improvements in that area, so that if MoDOT comes along and has to purchase the right-of-way, then they, they don't have to purchase those improvements or just purchasing the land. But, I mean, we, on residential subdivisions, we always require right-of-way dedication. But there's a, there's a different line between residential and commercial, because residential, you are creating vehicular trips, and suppose, generally, commercial, you're capturing rather than generating, so.
Any other comments? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the Platte as is.
All right, is there a second? All right. Mr. Settley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
All right, the Platte is approved, eight to zero. The next application on the agenda is application 24485. We need to-
I'm sorry, the variance on the Platte?
Do we need to vote on that?
I guess as is, you're saying that you approve the variance as well for the, for the lots to front on, on Highway N? Do we need a separate motion on that?
Unless you have somehow got it shown on the, on the Platte itself.
I guess it's shown on the Platte. Yeah, it's shown, okay, never mind, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. All right, the, the next application is actually 23790, the preliminary Platte for the woods at Dwella Crossing. Is there a motion to move it, bring it up from the table?
So moved.
All right, is, Mr. Ellis, is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, the application is brought up from the table. Application 23790, the preliminary Platte for the woods at Dwella Crossing. Waterside Crossing LLC is the owner slash developer, Colan Associates is the engineer. The property is owned RR, single-family residential district, three acres minimum lot size, and RFF, RR/FF, single-family residential district with floodway fringe overlay district. The property is located on the west side of Dwella Road at Gold Mine Drive and is located within Council District 2. Steph?
Okay, this Platte is the one we've, we've been working on for a few months, that we had an issue with the hookup to the sewers. They've worked something out with Public Water District Number Two where they can hook into the lift station and the subdivision to the north. That's in Wentzville, of course, I don't know the name of it. But they've, they've gotten approval from Public Water District Number Two to do that. The revisions have been made to the Platte. They are also requesting variances to not put in a private street. They're going to use an easement of access. They're proposing that the gravel be 16 feet wide, which meets our private street standard for a cul-de-sac street. They're also requesting that they not put in a cul-de-sac, they put in a hammerhead turnaround. So all the revisions have been made. Staff is, staff recommends approval of the Platte. And we did receive letters from Public Water District Number Two, the Soil and Water Conservation District, and the city of Wentzville.
Is the, just so we know, is the variance request represented in the Platte as well? Just so we get to the vote.
Yes.
Just so we can, when we get to the vote on this one, we don't have that issue again. All right, any, any other questions of, of staff? Is the applicant in the room? Feel free to come forward.
Good evening, my name is Mike-
Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Mike Von Der Heid, 401 South 18th Street, St. Louis, Missouri. As you can see, this is a, an existing parcel of 10 acres or just less than 10 acres. The owner is proposing to create three, three-acre lots, or those lots slightly larger than three acres, with a private drive, that drive being, meeting the city or the county standards. We are asking for a variance request for, to put in a hammerhead, which gives the same turnaround-type movements for emergency vehicles and other vehicles per standard international building codes, actually. So it does the same thing as the, as a cul-de-sac, it just lessens the amount of disturbed area, the amount of clearing and grading that goes along with that. The overall development is trying to be as green as possible. We have disturbance limits, less than an acre, and we're retaining, I believe, 91% of the trees on the site. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
All right.
Thank you.
We will now open this up to the, the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this particular application, please feel free to do so. All right. Seeing none, we will bring it back before the Commission. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Mr. Griffin, votes, motions to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Ellis, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Settley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
All right, this applicant, this Platte is approved, eight to zero. The other one stays on the table. And again, too, the, the final Platte for the Enon Branches Estate has been requested to remain on the table. All right, the other items on the agenda, the, the meeting minutes that were mailed to us were from the September meeting, so we will handle October's meeting minutes at our next meeting, so we have a chance to look over that and make sure everything is, everything is good. And Mr. Myers, our director, has asked for a couple of minutes of our other time to get our feedback.
I wanted to ask a question if I could, and please get some feedback on your thoughts. Our department is working hard to transform how we do permitting for all types of permits, to make it a digital process, essentially, so that we could process all the Platts, all plans, all applications digitally, that people could submit digitally, online, and we're actually getting pretty close to being able to do that. In conjunction with that, our county website's also been upgraded recently, and it allows agendas to be posted on the website and to post digital packets. So for instance, soon, we should be able to post the entire packet. You could just, if you wanted to, you could just download certain items if you'd like to. People can sign up for alerts to find out when the agenda is posted online and to find, and get another alert when agenda packet might be updated, for instance. So I guess that naturally leads to the question of how the board and commission members want to receive their packets. Do you all want to receive them paper packets? Do you want to rely on digital packets that are posted on our website and then get a, an alert when that's posted? There's some, I think, different, different people will see this differently. Some people like the benefits of having the digital packets, to be able to download that on a, on a laptop, or iPad, or whatever it might be, so that they can review it even at the meeting if you wanted to. Other people like the, being able to have the paper in front of them, being able to refer to it and draw it on it. Now, we're always going to have our, our screens that we can, we can pull up images on, including the big screen. And anyway, I just wanted to get your, your thoughts on that. You don't necessarily have to give a definitive answer tonight, but I think maybe I'll just send out an email if that's okay, and, and see if you have any individual responses, but yes.
I would vote, I would like the hard copy mailed, as it is now. My personal opinion.
And I would second that. It's old school, I take the packet and I set it down and I get my magic marker and then I flip through it and maybe drive out to the place and all that.
You have two paper people.
Yeah, old school.
I just kind of have an alternate comment, a little bit. I like the idea of the digital. My only concern would be how we would get this, you know, when we have plans. Because the older I get, the more difficult it's getting to see very tiny print. I, I can't see how that would be done electronically, where I could print it out later. I mean, because that would ultimately be what I would do, is print it out so I could review it.
Okay.
Is there-
Well, with the, with the Platts, we talked about that a little bit. Platts, you can always, the digital Platte, you can always zoom in. If you want to print it out, you could print out, I guess, sections of eight and a half by 11, or print out the whole thing, eight and a half by 11, or whatever size, but that's going to be probably pretty small. We'll have the digital versions up on the screen. I guess it just depends on how you want to handle it.
Do you, do we have Wi-Fi in this building that we would be able to access? If I brought my iPad in, and I would be able to, just, I mean, so I wouldn't have to print those off?
It's my, that's my understanding, that, yes.
I've never tried.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Maybe we could still do, do the mailings every month for, for a period of time, six months, or, and, and also have them available digitally and see if, see, you know, what turns out that people like to do, what, what their preference is after that, after they're both available.
Yeah, I, I'd probably have to throw my vote behind that one, too. I mean, I, I'm as much about stepping into the next, you know, the next century as much as the next person, but there is something to say for having a hard copy, and I'm thinking about, you know, taking notes and being able to do that.
Internet service is down.
So I'm, I, so I'm, I'm kind of up in the air myself. I, you know, I'm not, I can see, I can see both sides of it, so I think a little transition time, you know, I think a few months of doing both to give us a chance to be able to experience, you know, experience the new digital aspect of it, but not solely, but not solely depending on that for a little bit would kind of, would-
See how that works in the, in the real world, I guess, so to speak.
Yeah, a real-world test would be, I think, appropriate.
the alert, and you would get immediate access to it, and they're, they're way, theoretically, it should be a little extra time to review things, because in the, in the mail, it's going to take a couple of days to get, to reach you, and if there's a holiday in between, it may even be a little more. Okay, I appreciate the feedback.
Any, any other business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you all next month.